I'd call the Board of Supervisors to order. I need a motion, or is there a motion to come back from closed session?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
I say yes. Robbie.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I need a motion, or do I have a motion to so certify that we only talked about what we said we was going to talk about?
Mr. Sherman, I move that we certify executive session, that we only spoke of the items that were mentioned in the motion to go into executive session.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
So moved.
A motion and a second. Start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
I say yes, Robbie.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Okay. All right, ask Robbie to do the invocation and the pledge, please.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and this opportunity to be in this group, gathered together, just ask that you watch over us and protect us, Lord. We ask that you keep us mindful of our duties and that we do the duties of the county that are pleasing to all. Keep us mindful to be upfront and honest with each other, and Lord, we just ask you to watch over and bless each and every one of us, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, have a motion and a second. Start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
I say yes, Robbie.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell.
Yes.
And Bob.
Yes.
All right. Do all three of you second. Amen. All right, do I have a motion to approve consent agenda, section A, B, and C, is that correct? I have a motion. Does anybody want to pull any of those items out?
I make a motion that we approve sections A, B, and C of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second to approve A, B, and C. Start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Phil. I say yes, Robbie.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
All right. Now, I guess Gordon Jones at the bat. He's with Robinson Farmer &amp; Cox, does our audit.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. It's good to be with you all this evening, Mr. Truitt. Thank you all for having me. Looks like there may be some new faces on the board, just in case. My name is Gordon Jones. I'm the partner in charge of the county audit. I've given you a little handout that will help in going through the audit, but before I do that, I'd like to talk about the reports that we issue as part of your financial statements. No need to follow along, they're all clean reports, but we'll talk about them in just a second. The first report is the independent auditor's report. For this year, it's a clean, unmodified report. We do refer to a new accounting standard, GASB statement number 75. It's financial, it's accounting and financial reporting for post-employment benefits other than pensions, and I'll get into that just a little bit later on. It's a clean, unmodified report. Any questions about that? Can't do any better than that. There are two other reports that we issue as part of your financial statements. One's referred to as Government Auditing Standards Report. It's also referred to as the Report on Internal Control and on Compliance and Other Matters. Last year, we had a finding for adjustments. This year, there are no findings, it's a clean report. We had some adjustments, but they were kept to a minimum. The last report that we issue as part of your financial statements is the Uniform Guidance Report. This is a report, sometimes referred to as a single audit report, it's a report on federal funds. It's a clean, unmodified report as well. Questions about those reports? Okay. I'll turn my attention to the handout that I've given to you. On page two, the county's books are kept on two different bases of accounting. At the top, you have the statement of net position. This is a full accrual, long-term perspective. At the bottom, you have a short-term governmental funds. It's a modified accrual basis of accounting. On the top, and I'm looking at page two, the column all the way to the right, 2018. The most important part of this presentation is the equity position, the equity part of this. The total net position, total net position for the county is about $32 million. Most of that is made up of net investment and capital assets of about $25.5 million. You have some restricted funds, about $77,000. The unrestricted net position is about $6.4 million. You can see that over the five-year period since 2014, it's decreased from about $10.4 million. The good news is that other localities are reporting negative net position in some cases. So the fact that you all have positive unrestricted net position of $6.4 million is a good thing. As we'll get into in looking at some of the new standards, there are a number of liabilities you're having to put on your books as a result of those standards.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for those words. The Board has worked really, really hard on increasing our fund balance and so forth, and it's been tough. I can see why all these counties are having it tough.
Yeah. Well, it's, on one hand, you're decreasing fund balance by paying large principal balances, but on the other hand, you're keeping a positive net position on the full accrual basis accounting because you're paying so much debt off. So one's hurting the other, so to speak. On the bottom, you have the short-term modified accrual numbers, and again, the important part of this is the fund balance section at the bottom. The county reports about $8.1 million in unassigned fund balance. You have non-spendable funds of about $658,000, and then some other funds are reporting as well. Total fund balance on governmental funds, about $8.9 million. Your governmental expenditures, including the school board, about $75 million. So your total fund balance is about 12% of those expenditures, unassigned fund balance at about 11%. We typically recommend those numbers to be about 15%. Any questions about that?
Yeah, I've got this draft letter, it says something about our unassigned fund balance being at 9.2%. It's our, what we call a management letter?
Yes, sir.
So has that changed since then?
No, it hasn't. Well, do you mean has the fund balance changed since?
Yes, since this letter.
No, it has not changed.
Oh, so it is 9.2?
The general fund unassigned balance is 9.2% of the operating expenditure. Yes, sir. Over on page three, you have a summary of the general fund. Are there any other questions on the previous schedule? Page two. They don't make governmental accounting easy. They have to show a full accrual statement, and they also show a modified accrual basis. Both of them can be very confusing. Over on page three, this is basically the income statement on a modified accrual basis for the general fund. The general fund is the main operating fund for the county. It's typically where reserves are held, so it's important to see how well or how poorly the general fund did. In the column all the way to the right, 2018 numbers, total revenues at about $42.3 million, increasing at about 3.5% per year over that five-year period. Total expenditures at $42.3 million, increasing at about $1.6 million per year over that five-year period. It's good that the revenues are increasing faster than the expenditures, obviously. Your change in fund balance this year was an increase of about $65,000. As you can see in the red there, past four fiscal years, you've had significant decreases in fund balances. So you've done a good job this year in not having such large decreases in fund balance, which basically means you were able to stay at about the same amount of fund balance that you had in the previous year. Ended up with about $8.9 million in fund balance. Cash balance at about $6.2 million. That's an increase of about $775,000 in cash over the previous fiscal year. Last year, it was $5.4 million. And again, we have the same calculations. This is just the general fund. The general fund, as a percentage of the total expenditures, including the school board, is about 11.9%. Cash balance at about 8.2%. Any questions about that schedule? Over on page four, there's a pie chart of revenues comparing the general fund from fiscal year 2014 to 2018. It's pretty much the same picture from one year to the next. Property taxes make up about 52% of your total revenue, 2014, 51% in 2018. Over on page five, your expenditures of the general fund. Two departments or two functions that are increasing, public safety, that green color increasing from 19% to 23%. Social services and that other green number increasing from about 14% to 16%. That's health and welfare, that includes both social services and CSA. And then the school board decreased from 30% down to 28%. Any questions about that schedule? This is typical for other localities. We see increases in public safety as well as health and welfare, which is social service. Over on page six, general fund revenues in a bar chart. The major revenues on the bottom, no surprise that general property taxes, main source of revenue for the general fund. Intergovernmental revenues, state and federal revenues, and then other local taxes. Nothing surprising here. General property taxes increasing slightly over the five fiscal years. Over on page seven, expenditures of the general fund. Education is number-one priority in Carroll County. That education line item is mostly the transfer to the school board, made up of mostly the transfer to the school board. Does not include debt service, which could be added on to that number. Public safety's second, health and welfare, third, and then debt service, which is mostly made up of payments for improvements to school, fourth there. Questions about that?
And you realize that in 2020, phase one of our debt service is going to drop off, it'll be paid, so, excuse me, so that will greatly help the Board, excuse me.
Would you look at this chart right here? This is from last year, and I can give you this, this is out of y'all, from last year of this presentation. How would that look today?
I decided to take this one out, of course, but anyway, the numbers are together. I did put it together, but the revenues and expenditures are basically the same this year. So while they're increasing, they both collapsed into basically the same number, and that's indicative of your fund balance only increasing $65,000. That means total revenues, total expenditures are basically the same.
So there's still a gap?
No, actually, if you increase fund balance, it means your revenues would have been more than your expenditures, so it would have flip-flopped this year.
Okay, so we're, the blue line is going to be above the...
That's correct.
The purple one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Over on page eight, I like to give a summary of debt. Debt for the county has decreased significantly since 2014. Five years ago, it was at $51.5 million. It's decreased to $37.9 million, and that's the result of you all paying pretty hefty principal payments over that five-year period.
Somebody, I spent 30 minutes on Main Street, and they were saying that the county owed $100 million, and it was news to me, but you're saying the total we owe is 51 million?
Well, if you look at page eight, we show that the county, excuse me, including interest-bearing debt as well as estimates, estimates for pension liabilities, estimates for other post-employment benefits, are about $38 million. If you include the school boards of $46 million, then you're up to $84 million. If you wanted to go further and add the PSA debt, you could, and you'd probably be up over $100 million. That includes interest-bearing debt, compensated absences, anything that's considered a long-term debt. Other post-employment benefits, which is an estimate.
But a lot of it is long-term debt. It's not like it's due next week or next month.
That's right. That's right.
And I imagine trend with localities is long, is going to longer-term debt, because their budget is, most counties, I would think their budget's pretty tight.
Yeah, they are. Just about all of them are pretty tight right now. But Carroll County's doing a good job in decreasing interest-bearing debt by paying pretty large principal balances, which is good.
But we don't have a choice in that matter.
Don't have a choice.
I mean, it's already set up, right?
Yeah.
QSCAB was amortized over 10 years.
Okay. The good thing about the QSCAB is most of the interest, or a lot of the interest is paid by the federal government. You get a refund on that, which is good.
Can you explain the $34 million pension liability that's included in that 84 million long-term liability? Not in detail, but...
Try to. A few years ago, we adopted, 2015, we adopted GASB 68, which required the county, the school board, all governmental entities to put the full debt, the full liability for unfunded pension liabilities on the books. Prior to that, you were able to show it as required supplementary information behind the notes, so you didn't have to put the liability on the books. Actuaries come up with what they think is your liability, and based on the information provided from VRS, we put those liabilities on your books. For the county, the net pension liability was about $5.1 million. For the school board, the net pension liability is about $34 million, $34.2 million. And basically, what these numbers are, are estimates of what they expect to pay retirees in the future compared to what you have on hand at VRS. So they project this liability out, discount it back to today's numbers, and they compare it to the cash balance, investment balance you have on hand at VRS. You all are paying...
Federal government budget and obligations are really good shape.
Yeah, they're all in good shape.
Being facetious.
It's nothing that the county is necessarily doing wrong. The county and the school board both pay the rates required by Virginia retirement system. It's just that the actuaries calculate these liabilities, and they're pretty large based on the benefits that are being provided. Any questions about those liabilities? That explain it? And I've got a schedule on the next page. It talks about the new OPEB schedule, new OPEB liabilities. GASB, the Government Accounting Standards Board keeps issuing standards that make sure we're not going to be out of work anytime soon, that's for sure. For 2018, you had to adopt statement number 75. As I mentioned earlier, this is accounting and financial reporting for post-employment benefits other than pensions. So these are liabilities related to providing retirees healthcare, which the county does not do. It also includes liabilities related to group life insurance at VRS as well as health insurance credit. And if you participated through LOTA, through VRS, you would also have a liability in that amount, but you do not. This schedule shows you what OPEB liabilities are on the books. For the county, you all participate in the group life insurance, as every other locality does. At VRS, your liability associated with that participation's about $541,000. The school board participates in a whole bunch of programs. They have a retiree healthcare liability of about $5.5 million. They have a professional and non-professional, which is basically teachers and non-teachers' group life liabilities. That equals about $1.9 million. And then the health insurance credit for both of those classes is about $3.9. The school board's total OPEB liability is about $11.3 million. Last year, before this standard was adopted, they had an OPEB liability of about $2.8. And basically, what's happened is, through this new standard, Government Accounting Standards Board wants you to book the whole liability and not be able to phase in that liability over a certain period of time. So that's why in last year, it was only 2.8. This year, it's 11.3 for the school. Luckily for the county, the fact that they don't have, don't participate in a number of these programs, they only have $541,000 in OPEB liabilities. So that's a good thing for the county.
Let me get this clear. School board pays their retirees healthcare to the tune of $5 million, $5.5 million every year almost?
No, sir.
Or is that the total?
No, this is an estimate of what actuaries think you'll have to pay in the future. The school board will have to pay.
Well, that's...
And the school board doesn't actually pay anything toward the health insurance.
Okay.
What's that? That's right. That's right. Yeah, and it's, and they don't pay, I'm pretty sure the school board requires each retiree to pay the insurance, but they, there's an implicit rate subsidy that's calculated by the actuaries, and that's what this number is. So it'll be something paid by the, the idea is that while, while you have employees and you're paying them, you have to, you have to book the liability that you'll pay in the future, the whole matching principle in the county. This is what they think, as these employees work, they'll have to pay in the future. It's a pretty complicated calculation that I'm pretty sure I couldn't do, and who knows how close it is, but it's the best estimate.
I heard a story about a doctor that came in to the patient and told him that he had good news and bad news, and that the good news is he had about a week to live. The bad news is he should have told him last week, you know? I don't know whether he's giving us good news or bad news at this point.
Well, I wouldn't say it's horrible news. You were, you know, if your fund balance had decreased by another $700,000 or $800,000 or a million dollars, as it had done in the past, the news would be a lot worse, but I think you've, that that has slowed down. Hopefully, this year will be the same, or maybe an increase in fund balance would be good.
Bob, the good news, it's better than it was last year.
That's right.
Yeah, it's better than the year before.
Yeah, exactly.
Just real quickly, these last few pages, this page on page 10 through 12, this is our communication to you. It's required by an auditing standard. It's a clean report, nothing negative reported in these three pages. And then lastly, we had a few management comments. This includes the management comment about fund balance.
There it is.
There are some other management comments there as well. If you have any questions as you read through these, you're welcome to contact me or ask me now, if you prefer. With that, I will close and see if you all have any questions, any other questions.
Could I go back to page two?
Back to page two.
The very bottom of the top half.
Yes, sir.
The current ratio of the debt-to-equity ratio.
Mm-hmm.
Could you explain those numbers, and are we going in the right direction or the wrong direction there?
Current ratio is just your current liabilities divided by your, current assets divided by your current liabilities, and the higher the better. So 11.8 is great. Debt-to-equity ratio, you want that number to be as low as possible.
So those are trending in the right direction?
Sir?
Those are trending in the right direction.
That's right. That's correct. I'd say anything below two for a local government's good, on the bottom number. Any other questions?
Yeah, we're looking at doing a debt policy.
Yes, sir.
And how many counties have that around us?
Very few, actually, so I think it's a good policy to look at. I think Nikki asked me some questions about it a while back, and we searched high and low to find other debt policies.
Franklin County.
And Franklin County shared theirs, because I was thinking what Nikki had given me was kind of insufficient, but based on what Franklin County had, it was spot-on, so...
So that would be, if we'd had that 2010, we probably wouldn't have been in this circumstance for 2008, when all the debt was accumulated.
Possible. Possible.
Anybody else have any questions? We certainly appreciate it.
Yes, sir, you're welcome.
Great information.
If you have any questions and you want to ask me in person, you're welcome to email me, call me, either one.
You said a lot of other counties or jurisdictions were having same kind of financial stuff going on. Where would you say Carol is? Are we on the bottom?
I think I had this question last year, and I butchered it. I would say you're not as bad as some, and maybe not as good as others. I can speak to one other locality that has about a 2% fund balance right now, general fund balance, and it's... Their cash balance is horrible, and they're living off of loans.
My wife told me that she knows she didn't have much of a husband, but she figured she could do worse. I didn't know whether to take that, you know, smile or cry, you know?
Well, I'd say this year's numbers are more positive than they have been in the past.
I was going to ask him if he was a lawyer. We certainly appreciate your work.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Teresa Isom, CMPT.
I want to kick this in a couple of weeks ago. The numbers are a little bit different, so that's...
CPMT, that's in for something central intelligence.
Excuse me, CPMT.
It's Community Policy Management.
Oh, okay.
So I think you guys got my request for a supplement on our CSA funding a couple of weeks ago. It's better than last year's requests. However, due to the increase of foster care cases, special education placements, residential parent placements, these are all mandated services that have to be funded. And last year, we had 51 children in care. Right now, we have 89.
Residential parent placement means incarcerated probably?
No. It has a lot to do with children that are not being able to be managed in their home or in the school system, and the parents are placing them to help them get the treatment that they need so they can come back home. But it's a mandated... I mean, it's a funding source for CSA. We have increased our CSA cases by 25 in one year. And then again, 38 more children in foster care in one year. We have a severe drug problem that is putting a lot of our children in care, and even the children that are coming in care being positive for meth, marijuana, a little bit of everything. Within less than six months, we've probably had four teenagers come in that were testing positive for meth. And I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but that's a lot.
As a former schoolperson that was in charge of this, people don't have any idea how bad some situations are that one deals with in the school setting and out of school. It's just a terrible situation.
And when children come into care, they usually go through the Child Protective Services revenue, meaning that there's been a Child Protective Services investigation. And I know that the workers are trying to make family placements, parental placements, so the children don't come into foster care. But it's hard for us to get somebody to pass a drug screen to take a child on. And when I say hard, I mean, one night, there was 10 people that were drug tested, and none of them passed for a sibling group. So it's...
And it's hard in employment...
Absolutely.
To hire, you know, a lot of folks, because they don't pass.
Was there a difference in the type of drugs that they all test for marijuana?
Oh, no. It's a little bit of everything. We've got... Meth is a huge issue. And then, you know, there's the prescription drugs that they don't have the prescriptions for. And then, of course, the Suboxone and things of that nature that are supposed to be helping people get off drugs. Sometimes, they don't have a prescription for it, for whatever reason, and are buying it off the street, too. So it is... Meth is our main issue. When I say four kids came into care within the last six months, all of them tested positive for methamphetamine.
Is that from just touching items? Or is that just taking the parents' drugs?
That's... Or wherever they get them. It's not necessarily even the parents. We have a child recently that the parent... The grandmother, she's not a meth user, but he is. And there's not a whole lot you can do when they're able to get it on their own, especially teenagers. We've taken a lot of children because of the drug issues of their parents. And unfortunately, it is trickling down to them. But like I said, it's less requests than it was last year.
But we increased the budget for last year.
Yeah, there's that. I was just going with the general...
You're not giving my free.
It's a good attempt. It's a smokescreen, maybe. The numbers... The first packet that I gave you with the letter has from 2000, January 31st of 2017, then January 31st of 2018. And then, at that point, the last numbers we had were December 31st of 2018. So you can see, at that point, even when I submitted it, I checked to see how many children we had in care, and it was 85. So within February, we've added on another four. We almost got another two today, instead of just one.
If a small place like Carroll County, I mean, the board looks at it as a financial...
Hardship?
I mean, it's awful. But how could a large city or even a large county... How... If we got this kind of problems here, what do they have in a large city?
And I can't really answer that. I did come from a larger county that has less children in foster care. And I know from experience with that, that we were able to make a lot more parental placements. There were people that were able to step up and take the children and pass drug screens. And, you know, when you do a parental placement, there's no financial support. So these are people opening up their homes to children that they're... You know, they could always petition for custody of the children and maybe get child support ordered through the court. But as for Department of Social Services or CSA, you know, we would fund services. So say it would be if they didn't have Medicaid, you know, intensive in-home or something like that, to help them maintain their placement. But as for, like, handing money to the family, that doesn't happen when it's a parental placement. And that's where people get a little confused, because we tried to do that first, and they're thinking that they're taking kids into foster care. But in order for you to be a foster home, you have to go through extensive training, background checks, home studies, and things of that nature. If you're... You know, if the parents are placing, that's what the form is called, because it's the parents' choice to place the children in the home, they don't have to have those, but there's no financial support.
Some of these kids that are testing positive for meth, I can see why people or parents or folks would be reluctant to take those kids.
Absolutely. And because it's such an issue and hard for people to get over it, they're going to need treatment. And a lot of... We don't have that treatment here. We have to send them to Richmond or Portsmouth and those areas to get them assessed and diagnosed and into...
Wherever there's an opening.
That's exactly right.
And once that happens, that creates a larger burden on you all, too, correct?
It's a much bigger financial burden for CPMT and CSA. If they're in... As you can see, our residential numbers are going up. They did go up over the last year. But it was five additional residential placements, but we got 38 kids in care. So... And three years ago, when I started, we had no locally approved homes. This past year, we approved 12. So... And if anybody sees it in the paper or on Facebook, we're trying to do another reach out for next week of getting people that are wanting to become foster parents. So we're beating down the doors to try to get the foster parents, but people have to agree. And it's a hard thing to open up your home to kids that have some issues.
And when these kids are placed in other localities, you have to make physical visits once in a while.
Yes, and I had that... One of my CPMT members requested me check in on that, and that one of the policies is about whoever is seeing these children need to have a relationship with all aspects of the case, and not only with the kids, but be able to attend court hearings, any interaction with the parents, because it's all about getting them back home. And so if we were to pick somebody in Northern Virginia for our kids that are placed up there, that person could work with that child, but they're not able to work with the family. And that is always the main goal, is return home. So get the family better, get them the services that they need so that the kids can come back. So it's... There can't be that lapse of communication, which is a bummer. For lack of a better word. I mean, I've made many trips to, all the way to the eastern shore, just so the workers didn't have to, because when you have 89 children in care and 20 days in a month to see them, it's impossible.
Abraham Lincoln said, "I laugh because I dare not cry."
Every day.
I was hoping we could beat up on you tonight. I mean, it is... We get in between a rock and a hard place on the budget stuff. You know, your side of the equation is a big reason we're crying the blues, okay? But I already see there's not anything you can do.
Well, she's dealing with the jail part of it. People that get locked up in jail, then you having to deal with the kids and issues with the kids.
Yeah.
And where Carroll County is located, it's pretty... We've gotten three, four, four children off the interstate stops. And they're not from here. They're not nowhere near Carroll County. We've got them from Florida to Ohio. But they still get stopped in Carroll County, and so...
And they're pulled out.
And they either go to jail, and there's nobody to keep the children, so...
Roughly, how many of you having to travel over 200 miles to see? I know that's probably tough, but just roughly.
Fifteen. Half, over half? Over half.
Y'all don't pay for motel and hotel bills with meals?
Well, you kind of have to, because it's more cost efficient than coming back and forth and back and forth.
You can't drive to Portsmouth and I...
If you could just drive to Portsmouth and turn around and come back, that would be... You could do that in a day. But then you see them in Petersburg, and you see them in Richmond, you see them in Virginia Beach, you see them in Newport News. You can't do that in a day and come back.
And it's not a vacation trip for you, is it?
No. At Christmas time, I did it. It was over 800 miles in two days, 10 children, in five different locations in two days.
And that has to be done monthly?
Monthly.
Every month?
And they have to see the children in their home for 75% of the time. So they can't... So you can't go during school hours, during when the schools open, because they have to see the children in their home. That's policy. Do you all have any questions for me?
I just want to say, Bob, a lot of the larger counties, more populated counties, they just have more resources than we do. That's a plain example.
And a lot more placement options.
Exactly. We just don't... We just... We're between a rock and a hard spot, like I said.
Of the 42 you have to see, how many different workers are seeing those? I mean, that's the other thing, too.
Well, that's a new thing that we have started. Because there's so many children in care, I have made foster care workers in certain geographical locations. So I don't have somebody seeing kids in Bristol, but also seeing kids in Virginia Beach. So I have broke it up into three different geographical areas to try to get them to be able to knock it out, you know, within a week's time, even if they have to go all the way to the east. That's been... That's... We're going to give it the old college try and hope that that is able... They're able to keep up with the play.
From Lee County to Virginia Beach is a fur piece down there.
It is. And we have one that it's over Scott County. We have one in Scott County, and then Virginia Beach and Winchester and Culpeper and Legnum, and pretty much all the good towns. And it could be anywhere.
The kid... And I didn't mean to interrupt you, Bob, I'm sorry. The kids that you're picking up off the interstate, should they not fall back to be the responsibility of those localities?
We try, but they have to agree.
The kids have to agree, or the locality has to agree?
The localities have to agree. And we're not talking localities in the state of Virginia.
That's the reason I was asking that question. I mean, because you would think if they were from Florida, you know... I know what we've dealt with in Mississippi, so I just, you know... So if the locality there don't take the interest in taking them, it falls back on whoever has picked them up, which tends to be.
Where the abuse neglect occurred in many cases gives Virginia jurisdiction, because there'll be a traffic stop, and you will find children with drugs in the car.
Yeah.
And so that's an act of abuse neglect that comes... At least for Virginia, that's a jurisdiction. And they're in foster care before you have a chance to turn.
Oh, yeah.
So if an officer made this stop, and there were drugs in the car, and those kids, are they placed in juvenile detention?
Oh, no. They're placed into foster care, especially if they don't get a bond. And that's how we've gotten three or four in the past few months.
Can we deny the kids?
No. Like he was saying, the abuse neglect occurred in Carroll County.
Okay.
All right, but if you don't have the foster parents here, they go to where there is a foster parent.
That we would find, that Carroll County Department of Social Services would find. So either they could be a home in Rocky Mount, but it's... We are the ones that are placing the children in Rocky Mount. And that's another thing. Once we put a child in our car, we have taken them into our custody, unless the parent gives us permission to transport. But we can't just go up and take a child without assuming custody of them.
But like a 15, 16, 17-year-old kid in that situation, where would they go to foster care?
They're still juvenile, so yes.
Till they're 18, right?
Till they're 18.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to mention that what she does, maybe I ask, after we've done talking about this tough situation, it is greater than 1%. So we're going to have to have a hearing in the office before we move the action. Remind you of that, before we move on.
We're just going to put that on the agenda for the next... Kind of figured that was coming anyway.
See you next month.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
We need somebody that can spin gold out of straw.
She drives hard.
Yeah, I know, but...
It's not easy. Robbie was on the CPMT. I've been on it. It is tough looking at the situations. I mean, it's just... It's tough what some of these kids do.
I dealt with that in school, and it was terrible.
All right, Scott Rayner, Social Services is going to bring us some good information.
Social Services, so I don't know if that was a little set up for me or what exactly, but you put me on after that to try and explain... you put me on after that to try and, uh, explain this thing called CSA, but, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, thank you for inviting me. Um, my name is Scott Reiner. I'm going to, I'm going to flip my little PowerPoint. You have copies of the materials, uh, if you'd rather look there. And I am the Executive Director of the State Office of Children's Services, and we have the, uh, responsibility and privilege of overseeing the CSA program that you just heard about, um, in Carroll County on a statewide basis. Um, and so, we certainly are, um, appreciative and empathetic of the struggles that the really challenging situations that children and families bring to us in Carroll, and bring to you in Carroll, and really across the state, represent both from a fiscal standpoint, um, as well as a, a human standpoint. Um, as, as you heard, some of the, the stories of the children that we serve through CSA are, um, you know, they're, they're the nightmares of our society sometimes, in terms of how children are, um, treated, and, um, and CSA provides, uh, an important backstop and resource. Um, if not for CSA, what, you know, you have children picked up on the side of the interstate, or in a home where the parents are abusing drugs in such a way that they cannot properly care for their children and place them at great risk, um, where you have children in the school system whose educational disabilities are so severe that, um, the schools, despite their best efforts, are unable to appropriately educate them and need additional resources. Um, this is the world of CSA, um, and I'm happy to spend a little time with you this evening, putting it in context. Um, I think I'm here because Dr., is it, L- Littrell, um, heard a similar presentation to the one I'll be giving to you, um, this evening at the VACO conference, and, uh, thought it might be interesting. Um, and I'm really glad, because so often, um, members of governing bodies, boards of supervisors, city councils, they just see the numbers. Um, and the context of how this program came to be, and, um, the understanding of its shared, um, obligation, it's, um, the numbers that you're looking at, uh, we're looking at too, at the state level. And so, um, typically, in a, in an unfortunate year, I stand before a different body called, uh, Senate Finance, or the House Appropriations Committee at the General Assembly, and I tell them a similar story to what you just heard, and, um, I don't, I don't know what you were thinking, but I often feel like, um, you know that movie with, uh, one of those James Bond movies, where he walks across the bridge, and the, the villain, uh, opens the trap door, and the, falls into the piranha tank? So, I always have this kind of crazy idea that the senators or the delegates will open the door, and I'll fall into the piranha tank. Thankfully, that hasn't happened yet. Um, but I'll, I'll try and make it sensible for you. CSA is, is a complicated business. Um, we have our own set of laws and policies, but in addition, we are, um, because of the unique collaborative nature of CSA, where we serve, and people on the Community Policy Management Team, and the Family Assessment and Planning Teams, uh, we serve children from all of the agencies in, um, government that touch children. We serve children from the educational system. We serve children from the juvenile court system. We serve social service-involved children, and children who are involved with your community service board for behavioral health issues. Um, so, we're not only governed in many ways by the rules and regulations and laws of our own program, but those of, um, all of those other programs as well, um, because we try and act in a consistent and, um, congruent way across agencies, so that children are treated the same. You can't go in one door and get different treatment than if you go in another door. Um, so, you know, I, if I were to ask, you know, you guys, how well do you think you understand CSA, and ask you to raise your hand if you think you understood everything you needed to know about it, I suspect very few of you would raise your hands, and on many days, I wouldn't raise my hand either, and I'm responsible for it, um, because we have to be aware of, of, um, federal law, in some cases, state law, and the policies and regulations that govern all of the agencies that I mentioned. Um, but CSA came into being a little over twenty-five years ago, and it came into being because folks, uh, in really all aspects of the, uh, world that serve kids realized, um, we weren't doing such a great job, um, that there were literally thousands of children who were served across multiple agencies in an uncoordinated way, that a child might be in foster care and also have a probation officer, and might also be receiving services from, uh, a mental health professional at the, um, community service board, and those folks might never talk. And, you know, all of those approaches had their own eligibility criteria, and their own funding mechanisms, and it, it would be literally impossible for families in, that often to navigate that system in a way that provided them, you know, coherent and, um, consistent services. There were really large numbers of children in residential programs, um, where some of them, and unfortunately, still to this day, some of them were being raised in these places, um, either because of their mental health considerations, or because of the fact that their families just couldn't, you know, take care of them for various reasons. And I can assure you that children raised in congregate placements, hospitals, residential treatment programs, group homes, um, they really don't have the greatest outcomes when it comes to becoming adults, that we know that kids are best raised in families and in their communities. And where possible, where we can support their natural families by putting the things in place to allow those children to safely thrive in their own homes, that's choice one, and is typically the most, um, outcome-driven best outcome, and also from a financial standpoint, the best outcome. But if we can't keep kids in their families because they're not safe, or their behavior as such, we'd like to keep them in their communities, where they can go to the schools that they've been in, and maintain their educational continuity and their friend group. Um, sometimes, that's not always the best, but, you know, and only at last resort do we want to remove kids and put them hundreds of miles away, where the only connection back to their community is someone from the Department of Social Services. That's not their family. And one of the things we know, um, that I'm sure Teresa would confirm, is when these children turn eighteen, and the system says, "Well, we're done. We'll let you go," majority of these children return back to the families they were removed, as dysfunctional and as problematic as they were, that's their family. That's the only family they know. And for many of them, it's better than no family at all. So, CSA was, um, put into place to address some of these issues. And what it did was, um, rather unique, now, I would say more than rather unique, it is the only such program in the country that we are aware of, that it took funds from all of the agencies that I mentioned at the state level, and put them into a single, what we call the state pool. Uh, and you know how nobody likes to give up their money, um, and the control over their money, so this was fairly revolutionary, and it took literally, um, great leadership at all levels of both state and local government to make that happen. Um, so, they brought the money together, and then set up a program by which children and families could access those resources to help meet their needs. Um, and it was started off, as it was called, the Comprehensive Services Act, and I never know why they called it that, because you would, you know, you'd meet someone and say, "What do you do?" "Well, I work for the Comprehensive Services Act," and they said, they'd look at you like, "What does that mean?" So, um, almost four years ago, they changed it, thankfully, to the Children's Service Act. Now, people say, "Well, what do you do?" "Oh, I work for the Children's Service Act," and they understand, "Oh, you're doing something to provide some assistance to kids and families." So, we, we appreciated the change in name. So, it is a, an interesting program, but like many in, in Virginia, it's a partnership between state, the state government and local government. Um, there are, in fact, a hundred and thirty unique CSA programs at the state. And the reason it's not a hundred and thirty-three, because there are a hundred and thirty-three cities and counties, is a couple of jurisdictions have joined together and run a kind of collaborative, single fiscal program. Um, up in, in the Fairfax area, and in Greensville and Floria, a couple of localities have, um, kind of consolidated their activities. It is defined in the code, in the sections you see. Um, I work for the State Executive Council, which is established by code and is our governing body. It has twenty-one members, and of interest to you all, there are five local government representatives. They include both elected and professional government folks from cities and counties, and of interest perhaps is that, uh, Mr. Green, who is, um, on the City Council in Galax, some of you may know, uh, he was recently appointed and kind of, as well as Supervisor Mary Biggs from Montgomery County, so the southwest part of the state is well-represented among the local government members of the SEC, and we're glad to have that. My office, established by code, is, um, responsible for keeping the trains running. Um, we have oversight of the fiscal aspects. Um, we do, we have an audit function to ensure that localities, um, as is required by the code, are, uh, expending funds consistently, much like, you know, you heard from your auditor. Uh, we have our own audit process, our, we have a professional staff of auditors who follow, you know, pretty stringent guidelines for conducting their audit. We provide training and technical assistance to the hundred and thirty programs, um, in order to assist them in, um, meeting both the state's goals and their own goals in doing so. And to do so, we have a small finance and technology department. We do all that with fourteen full-time staff. Um, so, um, it's a busy office. Um, so, it's managed locally, as you know, by your Community Policy and Management Team, which is the, the code provides, is the government entity that is responsible for the program. Um, and the members of that team are, are described in the statute, who has to be on it, and typically, that includes a member of local government, so I don't know who that is, can be elected, can be appoint, um, professional staff, um, but the Board of Supervisors is responsible for appointing those members. Um, there is a requirement that a parent be there to represent the voices of, um, parents of children, and that we also include providers, the Health Department, um, and a pretty wide array of folks. The CPMT is responsible, um, in a fiduciary way, they are responsible for authorizing all expenditures, and for ensuring there's like, I didn't bring them all, but there are actually seventeen statutory responsibilities of the CPMT. The Family Assessment and Planning Team typically represents folks at the case level, um, where the children and families come, and their stories are told, where assessments are completed, and recommendations for services are made. Um, so, um, we have training for those folks, um, in our statewide knowledge center, because it's, um, literally impossible for us to reach a hundred and thirty different teams who have turnover, so we've gone to some of the, um, more electronic, distance-learning versions of training. So, not only is, um, is operation shared, financial obligation is shared as well. So, the state pool, which replaced the funding from the four agencies, the state pool started in nineteen ninety-three at around eighty million dollars. Um, last year, um, you can see down there at the bottom, that number was just a hair south of four hundred million dollars. And I'm from New York, if you couldn't tell, but even there, that, that's what we call real money. Um, so, uh, that's a combined expenditure. Um, overall, the state is responsible for sixty-five percent of those costs. So, when you hear, what you hear, we hear twice as much, because what, when it goes up, we absorb two-thirds of that. Um, and each locality has a rate that they match those funds at. The overall local match is thirty-five percent. I put in the red, that's your match here in Carroll County. It's twenty-nine percent, so it's a little bit below the state average. That was, uh, that rate was determined, um, based on, uh, financial well-being, um, calculation that was done in nineteen ninety-eight. Um, no one has been able to figure out how to redo it. Um, and within that, certain services match higher, and certain services match lower. Unfortunately, for Carroll, um, and I'll show you something in a few minutes, um, services in residential settings match at a higher number. It's a twenty-five percent, so if you're at thirty, twenty-five percent of that is another seven or eight percent. So, residential services match higher, certain services in the community match lower. Um, so, financially, you know, you ask, "Well, how can we drive the number down?" One way to move your number is to change the mix of service, and to provide more community-based services, which you get at, that's thirty, it's fifty percent off of that. So, for fifteen percent, you can serve, on a fifteen percent match, you can serve kids in the community, whereas you're paying almost forty percent for children who go to, um, residential settings. So, that's one way to think about how to move the number, is to look at your service mix, given the match rates. The majority of expenditures are for children in foster care and special education. Um, you are fortunate, truly, that your school division must be doing a pretty good job maintaining students in the public school setting, because, yes, what's happening in other localities, um, some other localities are literally drowning in special education costs under CSA. You are not, and, um, you should be thankful for that, um, and say thanks to your school division and the, uh, special ed folks there who are, um, clearly doing a good job. Um, your numbers in that area are quite modest. So, it's a shared, uh, funding mix, and so the intent is to serve kids, um, based on their needs and their strengths in the community. Um, so, we call it a child-centered, family-focused, and community-based vision. It's a vision, it's not a reality, because there are children who cannot be served in their community. You heard some of the reasons why. Um, there are just not the resources in some communities to do that, although I would, you know, uh, we put out the challenge, and the state has recently, you know, been challenged to, for children taken into foster care, to find more relatives who are able to take into custody, into care, their niece, their nephew, their grandchildren, and the state has put some things in place to allow, um, both the Department of Social Services and CSA to support them through a program called Kinship Guardianship, which will, um, allow the state to provide some kind of support, if you take your grandchild, or your niece, or your nephew, um, because, you know, that doesn't come without costs. Um, any of you who are raising, or who have raised children recently know the kids are expensive, um, and, um, and CSA can provide supportive services in those settings. So, I did want to show you one little quick thing, just to give you an idea of where your numbers look, and this is a, a quick, um, sneak preview of a new tool we're about to release in the next couple of months, um, but I'm going to just, uh, quickly show it to you. We haven't released it yet, but, um, it's a new dashboard, and I've highlighted Carroll County, and this is the landing page. It shows you over the last two complete years, what your, um, numbers look like. You serve about the same number of children. Your costs went up about, mm, what is that, about thirty-five percent, I guess, um, over the two years, your average cost. And the thing to keep an eye on, and remember I said the mix of services, what you see at the bottom is your actual match rate, not your fixed match rate. The more your actual match rate goes up, the more it means you're using residential services. So, you can see that between seventeen and eighteen, your, um, actual match rate went from twenty-six and change to twenty-nine and change, and that's just simply a reflection of the mix of services. That has, that's across all kids, so it tells you one area you might look at. Um, and so, just, I'm not going to go through this, I could spend a long time, but just to show you, there are, there's data here that... you, there are, there's data here that you can drill into in this dashboard over a couple of years that lets you see where you're expending your dollars, what categories they're in, and you can just, you know, in a quick look, see that your foster care and your residential costs are your two highest costs, accounting for, what, $2.3 out of $2.7 million last year. So that's where most of your costs are. I don't want to spend too much time there, only because I know you have other things on your agenda, you know, but I will tell you, the drivers here in Carroll County are foster care. And in particular, two things where your growth is, are in what we call therapeutic foster care. This is, these are when you're paying an agency to take, where Teresa can't find a family to take a child, she goes to a company. Sometimes they're for-profit, sometimes they're not-for-profit, but they've done the recruiting, and they've got foster families. And sometimes there, you have to go a couple of miles to find them. But not only do you pay for the, what you would pay if a child were in a family setting, you're also paying cost to that agency on top of it. And so that's, that's a big driver in costs, and statewide this year, we're, we're just getting clobbered with kids in treatment foster care. So there is some increase across the state in, in both the numbers of kids, but in particular, there, more and more of them are winding up in these treatment foster care settings, because across the state, local agencies don't have the capacity to place kids in family-based settings. And that's, so there's another place, if you were looking, where can we move our needle? And I was glad to hear, you know, you say we're doing, we're recruiting folks to be foster families. Because if you can get a family in your community to take children in, it's the same as a family that an agency is paying, it's just costs a lot less for you. You have to do a little more work, but in the end, it's a good approach. And so, so there's two things. One is, you know, looking at your mix of services and seeing where you can avoid using residential or bringing kids back quicker from residential. And secondly, using more family, family foster homes who your local department has recruited, as opposed to treatment foster care, where you're paying a considerable add-on for that service. I'm just going to highlight a couple of statewide, so that's one of your big drivers. The other one is your congregate care or residential numbers. And they're, they're pretty high. It has to do with not having places that'll take kids. The state is about to be undertaking in the next, what, about 15 months? The State Department of Social Services has been tasked by the General Assembly with reviewing every foster child in a residential placement and making a determination as whether they're there because they just couldn't find anyplace else for them, or they really have the clinical, behavioral, psychiatric criteria to warrant that. Because we know sometimes it's just the only place that'll take them, and they don't necessarily meet the criteria. These are often locked, very expensive placements, but sometimes they're, that's all there is. And the state has to figure out how to help localities and standing up additional services that can meet kids' needs without going into these costly, long-term placements. So, and as I said, your special education numbers are, thankfully, very stable and relatively low compared to many other localities where, you know, they're spending literally millions of dollars. And I'm not necessarily talking about big localities. I'm talking about small localities who are placing large numbers of students with autism and emotional disturbance in private school settings that are also extremely expensive and have a, have a duration often until the child turns 21 because of the federal law. So that was one of the trends, but, you know, I'm not going to dwell on that, because that's not really your issue. It's on a statewide basis, the big issue.
Excuse me?
Please.
Don't mean to rain on your parade.
No, please.
All right. There's a person in this room unnamed that ended up retiring from public education, I believe with a disability, kid through a chair, all right? And once upon a time, when I was a principal, I had three teachers in the emergency room at the same time on the same day from injuries. And I appreciate everything you're saying, but I'm not sure that public education can deal with every situation in the whole wide world successfully. And I can see why a locality might reach out to an outside agency, and at times, I felt like we should have been doing that. If I surveyed the three teachers in the emergency room, they would have agreed, okay? And I don't have the solution, okay? But I can, I can understand why a school or a classroom might, might look in a different direction. Some of these situations are near impossible, okay?
Yep. And I don't disagree with that. It's finding the right mix. It's providing school systems the right resources. And it's finding, you know, where's the sweet spot, perhaps?
And Carroll, I'm not knocking, has a very strong special ed supervisory situation plus very strong special ed teachers, and, but sometimes just one scratches their head, you know?
Yeah. Some of these situations are extremely challenging, and children are often aggressive, and unfortunately, the kind of thing you've described is just unfortunate that it happens. And it's finding the sweet spot. Who can we, with the right resources, educate in public schools and who can't we? I don't have the answer either. I wish I did.
Right. And other, other counties have same kind of situations to deal with. I've got a relative that's a special ed teacher in another locality, and very caring, successful person, and had a student with, who would have over 100 seizures per day, and was something like, one of, one of about six people nationwide to get a student loss. Some of these situations are absolutely impossible to, for people to be successful with. You don't give up, you keep trying, and Carroll does that, but it, it's a tough, tough situation, you know?
Yeah. One of the interesting things is, when I was, when I was a student a few years back, there was something called autism. No one knew what it was, because we never heard of it. Last year, the Centers for Disease Control, their most recent estimate is 1 in 59 school-age students suffers from some degree of autism. And, you know, it's not a joke, but we do, you know, talk, it's not the opioid epidemic that's killing us, it's the autism epidemic. And that's driving a lot of what you're, you know, it's driving much of what you see in the state. We spent out of that $393 million, I mentioned to you, 171 of that, 171 million of that was on private educational costs. And it's, if not for that, we would have been in cost decline. Overall, that increased beyond some of the costs that were decreasing. So I won't spend too much time on education, because there's the $172 million, because it's not the big issue here. So I'll, I'll kind of skip over that unless you have questions about educational funding. And to let you know, the General Assembly has been pretty interested in it and is looking at some solutions that we are working on. But to tell you something that might address, a development that may address some of your foster care concerns. Believe it or not, the federal government actually passed some legislation last year. They snuck it into the budget bill. It had been in discussion for years, and everybody thought it was gone. But somehow, they snuck it in the budget bill, the president signed it, called the Family First Prevention Services Act. It's the first major retool of how the federal government funds foster care in 30 years. And what they said, we were glad to hear, consistent with our philosophy, is that we're better off investing on the front end and preventing kids from coming into foster care than paying for it on the back end. So they have changed the way federal funds, called Title IV-E. It's a, it's a federal funding stream that supports children in foster care. But previously, you had to be in foster care to have access to it. And you could only access it if your family's income was below a certain level. Well, what Family First intends to do is to allow federal money to be used to fund prevention services before children come into foster care. And the way Virginia will implement that is, you'll be glad to know, is that will be 50% federal, 50% state match, no local contribution. So you will be able to access an array of preventive services that will be, they have to be what we call evidence-based, they have to have a scientific foundation of effectiveness. That was the string they put on it. But it will not have an income eligibility threshold, so it won't matter what the parents are earning, and it will be a fully funded state and federal program that, within the next 15 to 18 months, should provide localities across the state access to a variety of prevention services at no cost to localities. This is like, really good stuff, right? It will be intensive services for children and their families, parenting skills, for parents with addictive problems. CSA could pay for that now, but you'll be able to access service for family members who have addiction, to get them treated, to prevent their children from being brought into foster care with no local contribution. So it will shift the costs of those front-end prevention services, which you can already provide and do to a certain extent under CSA, but you're paying local share. This will have no local share. But the government doesn't do anything without taking something away. In order to make it a revenue-neutral piece, they have changed the rules on the residential side and restricted some of that, the use of the federal money that currently supports some of those residential placements. So the criteria for those residential placements will be ratcheted up for, in terms of quality, duration of stay, and eligibility. So it's, they intend to save money, once kids come into foster care and go off to residential, and prevent kids from coming in. The projections I've seen, that even, even modest diversions of children from foster care and residential care, because the prevention services are very much less expensive than residential, that it will easily become net positive revenue for the state and even more so for the locality. As you shift kids from residential into these prevention services, it becomes a very significant savings to the locality. So that's coming. Teresa knows about it, it's, you know, it's very complicated, but the state and localities are working very hard to implement it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
One thing that concerns me about this is, if you're in a locality like what we are that has utilized a high amount of residential, and you also are having trouble with services, the availability of services locally, what can we do to?
Right. So there is exposure if you're heavily dependent on residential. But the services to do this prevention work are being built. They're not the kind of services you've typically been looking for. There's a whole kind of service development piece to this. There'll be, there's been appropriations to train providers, and the commitment is to make sure that children and families in all localities have access to some of these services. So I think you're right to think about how many children you have in residential and start really thinking about what we can do about that over the next year and a half. But you will get access to many of the services. Some of them are already available. Some of the community-based services, your colleagues at the Department of General Justice are, have already stood up and are looking to expand in this area. There was a meeting-
So the local availability of a lot of these preventive services, I think it's giving us a hard time?
Yeah. Well, I wouldn't disagree with that, but this is going to force that issue. It won't work unless the services are available. Otherwise, it's like, you know, it's like an empty promise. So I think the, the commitment from the, from the state is to ensure that there's availability everywhere.
Is that through CSBs to?
Uh, well, it can be, it will be through whoever wants to stand up to provide them. It'll be public through CSBs, and it will likely also include private providers who are willing to get in the game. And I think they'll get in the game because there's-
Money's going to be available.
There's money, yeah. And because localities don't have to put up any share, you know, there won't be any reluctance to do so, because it'll be basically free money at the local level. But I think you're right, you need to look at your residential placements. One, that's your biggest cost, and it's two, the one that will get pinched under this over time. There'll be a transition period, so it's not like tomorrow, but I'd be starting to think about looking at those, how many children do you have in residential?
Fifteen.
Fifty?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, yeah. Hope it wasn't fifteen. Yeah. But, you know, they could wind up costing more money as the federal dollars pull out. I don't know how many of them are 4E right now, but, yeah. That's good, so you're, you're right on track with that. So we're, we're going to kind of watch Family First. It's a, it's a major lift, but the state and local partners are working very hard on it. And I think it has promise to, to change the way we deal with kids and to get them early, to preserve families where we can. Many of you know that Jay Lark, the state kind of audit folks, recently released a not-too-complimentary report about social services, which resulted in both several pieces of legislation, as well as money to address some of those issues, which include finding more family foster placements. So I think there's some momentum in the direction of addressing some of the issues that you're facing. It won't happen overnight, but, you know, it's going in the right direction, so I think that's good. I am probably well over my time, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I'm glad to hear that, because I agree. I think that earlier, one gets these kids coming into school, and you can see the problems at pre-K kindergarten, and it's easier to build a guardrail to stop a rec than it is to put the ambulance down the bottom of the cliff, you know? And I think that's the right approach.
And, you know, finally, the, you know, we got some support at the federal level to do that, to reprogram- to do that, to reprogram monies. You don't know, we see that, so.
I have a question. When this comes into effect, who would oversee these Family First programs?
So that will be, your local department will have a major function in that, and to some extent, the CSA will play a role in that.
Okay.
But it'll be, you know, your local folks between DSS and to some extent CSA, we're still working on the details, but that's, it will be overseen locally.
Okay. Will it be a voluntary participation for those services, or will there be mandates to where the families must use these services?
Well, when a family presents at risk of disruption, very often, either through the authority that you have or the authority of someone wearing a robe at the juvenile court, you know, you can't make anybody do anything.
Right.
But you can help them make the right decision and provide incentives. If a judge orders participation, if the local department says, "This is what you need to do for us not to pursue removing your child," sometimes that creates motivation. Whereas it's not, you know, you can't drag somebody, but you can, you know, you can lead them to the water, so to speak.
Be persuaded.
Yeah.
I applaud Teresa for getting the 18 foster homes in our area. Are there any other localities that are having real good success at doing this? Any kind of programs you can take to the community?
Yeah, I mean, there are some localities that have some very interesting activities around two things. One is locating actual kin that may not be here but are, you know, somewhere. There are now technology resources that help locate family members and help local agencies reach out to them. And there are some localities, I would note, Rono County, for example, that has a very, I think, successful and aggressive foster care family recruitment model that you might want to look at. They do a lot of things. It sounds like some of the things you may be starting to do through, you know, you said you put things out on the web and things like that. But Rono County has a very aggressive and, I think, successful model of recruiting foster families. And there are tools, technology tools, that, you have ones that you can use to find relatives?
Clear search. Clear search.
Okay. And there are some others that are available to help. Most of the time, if you don't ask, you know, if you don't find the family member and don't say, "Hey, your nephew is in, he's in, you know, in hot water," not necessarily because it's anything he did, but because your sister has got an issue, you know, "Would you be willing?" Very often, if you ask, they say yes. It's finding them sometimes that's difficult. And then getting them, you know, they have to meet certain criteria, but I'm not yet cynical enough to think that nobody can pass a drug test. There'd be somebody who can pass a drug test. So those are a couple of things that I would suggest. I'd take a look at Rono County's foster family recruitment efforts. I think they're a good model. And there are others. Teresa probably knows of some of them, and certainly some of the technology approaches to find family members.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming to Carroll.
Thank you for inviting me. I always appreciate the opportunity to help you guys understand, you know, what goes into it. It's a complicated program, and I know it stresses, it stresses you guys financially. But when the kids come in at nine o'clock at night, they can't sleep in Teresa's office, so she's got to do something with them. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you for coming.
And you could just, whoever's reading that, that's easy. Clean that out.
Good, thank you.
Beth Dixon, Twin County Chamber of Commerce.
I didn't see her.
All right. Nathan, Nathan Lyons, Drug Court Day Reporting.
Give me just a minute, I'll get the overhead started. Start with the handout. There'll be a quiz at the end, so make sure you take notes. There's no cheating notes for all of you. I have a-
Can I work with Dr. Littrell on this?
Dr. Littrell's allowed to work with you or help you.
Well, I thought I'd ask.
Kind of go over what we're talking about. We're talking about our day reporting program that we have here locally. And we're talking about, a lot of people call it the Drug Court, and that's okay. It's actually the Twin County Recovery Court. That's what the state refers to those as. They are by statute. And the reason I'm here is because some of you approached me and said, "Nathan, we've been doing day reporting for a while, how's it going? And I've heard about this thing called Drug Court, and you come and tell us." And I'm always a sucker in simple sure I'll come whenever you want me to come. And that's how I'm back here with you guys. So we'll go ahead and, it works right there, Nathan. So I won't give you the full history. Most of you know the history of the day reporting program. Kind of where we started was, it seems like yesterday, but I guess it was 2013, some of the supervisors said, "You know, our jail bill is outrageous, and I've heard about this thing in other localities, will you look into it?" And I said, "Sure, I'll go look into it." So I looked into, the closest one really at that time was Pulaski and Giles County. They had a kind of a form of day reporting. Giles really didn't have one when I went to look at it. Pulaski had a pretty good one, Grayson had just started one. So that's what we used. When we started the program, we built it from scratch. And when I say "we," I'm referring to Sheriff Gardner and Sergeant Edmonds, actually Corporal Edmonds, with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office. He is our day reporting agent. Without him, the program doesn't work. The program really doesn't use any funds. The participants pay for their drug testing and different things like that, but without Glenn Edmunds' help and his work in the program, it doesn't work. I can refer everybody every day, but without somebody making sure that they're where they are, where they're supposed to be, having contact with people that they're supposed to have contact with, and doing the things that they're supposed to do in the program, it really doesn't work. Just briefly, every person in day reporting goes to at least one class per week. They have a class here, I believe it's still on Thursday nights. Sometimes the class is geared around substance abuse, sometimes it's economics, sometimes it's finances, sometimes it's job resources. That rotates as Glenn brings in presenters that do the program and help people to work through issues that they might be having. There is also a financial component that the general locality receives from it, and that is the community service hours that are being performed. If a person arrives at day reporting and they have a full-time job, they're going to do 12 hours of community service per month, I'm sorry, per week. If they do not have a full-time job, they get one with us, and that is 40 hours per week of community service. There are certain exceptions. If a person is disabled and is a physical disability where they cannot do anything, they do not do community service. That's pretty rare, but that has happened to us. Now, how do they get into day reporting? Any felony offense that is sentenced out of Circuit Court, there is a set of sentencing guidelines prepared. The state has on the back of all of those, unless they are violent crimes, what is called an alternative checklist. And what it does is make sure the offender is being put in the proper category. And what the things it asks, their age, sex, how many times they've had interaction with the system as a juvenile, how many times they've had interaction with the system as an adult. It has different qualifiers, and it comes up with a score, and it tells you whether that offender should be referred to an alternative program like day reporting or whether they should not. So if they score out that they should receive some consideration of alternative, day report is one of the things that we look at. That's just the brief synopsis of the program, but really, you wanted me to tell you, you know, seven years out, where we're at. We started 2013 with our first class of folks, and this is year 2013. Now, these numbers, I am not a CPA or mathematician, these are the raw numbers that some of you asked for. If you'll see a candidate, and we only have the candidates by letter, we don't have their names. They're on the public side, if you want to go look them all up, but there are people that were very successful and have completed, didn't feel it fair to them that since they completed, they're doing well, to put their names. So you see candidates A through Q 2013. And you will see when they entered and when they either completed or removed. If they were removed, you see blanks, there is no savings to the county. But we did make an attempt. When you see numbers on the right-hand side, those are calculated by the jail sentence that's avoided, and the current cost per day as given to me when we did this chart from the jail. That's the total savings. Now, that doesn't take into consideration what benefits we get out of their community service or anything. These are just the numbers of what the county avoided paying for the incarceration of those folks that completed. You can see it, it goes through there. That's all in your handout. I won't spend a lot of time looking at that, but 2013, your total savings, if you look all the way at the bottom, is a little over 72,000. The completion rate or success rate of the people that were in there or ordered in there was just shy of 65%. It's extremely high, and as you'll see as we go through, that is not every year. 2014, you can see that was a big year, cost savings around 119,000. The completion rate drops to 54.5%. Why that drops from year to year, they spike and they drop, it all depends on the candidates. Some candidates enter the program, become very motivated, some do not. Officer Edmunds will tell you, you know, some people come in with a great attitude, some people don't. And the ones usually that come in with a poor attitude, don't finish. We'll go on to year 15, 2015, and you'll see, this is one of our lower years as far as net numbers, around 49,912 dollars that the county avoided paying, a completion rate of just shy of 39%. You'll see more empty boxes in that year. Why that's attributable, I've looked over the names, looked over their cases, they look like every other year. But for a host of reasons, those folks didn't complete.
If they don't complete or take part, aren't they incarcerated, deinterapped?
Yes. The jail sentence you see over here where it says jail sentence avoided, each candidate in Drug Court, no, I'm sorry, each candidate in the day reporting program, when they enter in, they know what the punishment is if they fail. So a typical person might have a one-year sentence in the Department of Corrections. If they do not complete the day reporting program, it's contractual. They have entered into a contract with the court, and we come back for a revocation hearing, it is going to be at least that or more, depending on the nature of their violation. The violations can be anything from simply failing to appear, testing positive, acquiring new charges is obviously some of the worst that we get. But each candidate that enters into the program knows what their penalty is at least going to be if they don't.
By the way, candidate B is not Bob.
It is not Bob.
Okay, it doesn't stand for-
Not for 2015, it is not.
All right, anyway.
2016 was another big year, numbers-wise, as far as what the county avoided paying, around $97,000. However, our completion rate again dropped to 37%. Why? I don't have those answers. But I can tell you that, you know, statewide average for alternative programs fluctuates somewhere between 20 to 30%. So every year that the county has decided to let us run this program, it has been more successful than other programs around the state. 2017, you'll see, we again approximately saved the county from paying a bill of $112,000, about a 50% completion rate. We take an incline there as far as numbers. That was a very high year as far as our savings. Then we go on to 2018. Now, 2018 really doesn't have numbers because most of those folks, you'll see in the next chart, we don't know until the bulk of those candidates complete. A lot of them are still in the program. You can see, you know, we have entry dates going all the way through October, July, so a lot of those folks have not completed their program. They're still in the program. We do have three folks on there who have completed, and you can see their savings are calculated right there. It shows 30% completion rate, but realize, that's only three of the individuals, the others are still to be determined, they're still in the program. They haven't been removed, for any lack of a better word. And then we'll go on to 2019. You can see, here are some of the folks that have entered in 2018 and who are entered in 2019. These are the actual active current clients. That is not folks who just came in in 2019. Only two of those on that chart are 2019. The bulk of the folks on there are folks that are still from 2018. That is just the active role that Officer Edmunds is supervising for the county. Anticipated savings, you can see in the bottom, the lower right hand, is about 104,000 if all those candidates are successful. That is kind of where we're at in a nutshell from day reporting. Any questions about day reporting specifically?
What, excuse me, what determines their length of service? I mean, what determines, is it the charges that they're facing that they have a certain time period to complete, or does some have to serve more than others, or how does that work?
Yes, all of that. What we do is we typically look at the offender, the nature of their charges. We don't typically like to have anyone in the program less than six months. And why we do that is, at six months, we get community service, we get them into classes, we think we can talk to them, because the idea is when they leave, we don't have recidivism rates and we don't continue to invest or spend monies putting someone in Department of Corrections or wherever. All these offenders are nonviolent offenders, so we're not dealing with crimes of violence, simply nonviolent crimes. And the idea is if we get them in the program long enough to receive some services and understand that there may be alternatives that they can look for, whether that be employment, whether that be Narcotics Anonymous, whether that be Mount Rogers, whatever that is for them, we typically like to see six months or more. Usually, we don't put somebody in the program longer than 12 months. We've had people in the program longer than 12 months because, you know, Officer Edmunds will tell you, there are folks that get off to a slow start, and they don't start getting into the groove early enough, and they may stay an extra month or two until they can sort of get their head on right and finish- finish up with the program. And we have had revocations where the judge, we have asked that they be removed from the program and the judge has taken their stay in the program. We had one gentleman do around twenty months. That's not something that the sheriff or Officer Edmonds or I contemplated or we wanted. However, he ordered us to do that and we complied with that. That individual was successful, we've not seen him again. But usually, for us, it's a one-shot deal. They're in the program, if they do violate for any reason and they're found out, we do ask the court to remove them. And simply because it doesn't set a very good example for the others in the program who are doing what they should do, if we let somebody violate and come right back to the program. Because this is an alternative to incarceration. This is not probation where we say, okay, you messed up, maybe we'll try you on probation again. This is a true alternative to incarceration. Otherwise, without this program, they would be served out. And that's why we do not like to put them back in the program if they violate. Any other questions about?
Nathan, this is a tremendous program. Just looking at the numbers, not only did it help the county, it's having a tremendous effect on many of these folks that are letters, go through probation successfully.
Sure, and that's nothing that I have anything to do with, that's going to be your day reporting compliance officer, not myself. That's going to be the resources that they put into it. I am only the gatekeeper about who is in and, you know, if there's a problem, they let me know, I bring it back to court. So all the credit for any of the good is back there. Starting the program, the sheriff and I passed that, it's only going to be successful about the guys back here who don't want you to ask him questions, okay? The question's just strict to me, not them, that's our deal, okay?
Yeah, wasn't it kind of easy to introduce anyone? What was the answer?
But, that's a good question. Sentencing guidelines, usually, I'm going to run in a given week probably twenty sets of guidelines, I guess, it would take ten to twenty. Sixty percent of those are going to recommend probation. So it's hard for me to put somebody in the program unless they have an active sentence. Crimes of violence don't go in the program. So we're dealing with a narrow band of folks. And usually what we targeted is first-time, not necessarily offenders, but the offender who this is their first time getting to court incarceration. Maybe they've been on probation before and that didn't seem to work, but this is the time that they're going for incarceration. So it is a narrow gap. We try to catch as many as we can. A lot of times we offer it, they decline it, we'll enter a bear plea or we go to trial and they end up with incarceration or what have. It is something that we try to offer a lot of folks, but we don't necessarily have a limit. But in the back of my mind too, I'm trying to always make sure that I'm talking to Officer Edmonds, make sure that he doesn't have too many folks. Because he can have too many folks sometimes, and you'll see that when we start talking about drug court, there's another category of offenders that he also has to sit around. But there's technically not a limit, but we realize his resources are fine. Any other questions about day reporting? Now, the one question you didn't ask that somebody asked me before and I forgot to address earlier, cost to the county? As far as I know, now, there's obviously a cost to everything we do. Sheriff Gardner was very instrumental in this program and he let us take a road officer, a road certified officer, Officer Edmonds, and use him specifically for this program. So his cost was already there. It was absorbed by the sheriff, putting the workload across a different band and using his resource or that tool in a different area. So, you know, now, I know there's a cost to everything, but as measurable as I can tell you, it should be relatively low. All right, I'm going to move on to the longer one that a lot of you wanted me to talk about. Now here, this last chart, of course, before I move on, this is your total four-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty dollars. That is the amount that this board, this county, has avoided paying to the New River Valley Regional Jail for incarceration. That is the number that you would have had to if this program was not in place over those seven years. Your average savings per year is around ninety thousand dollars. Now, you all see the jail bill, you know that's a drop in the bucket, that's not even a money, but it is something. And that is real dollars that this board, this county is not having to pay. Now, we don't always measure it in dollars and cents. We have a pretty good success rate of people not coming back. So there's a measurable that I can't put into numbers for you, but we do have folks that do not come back. And that's a chart of where we're at by year and active clients in day reporting. And then, of course, there's the little caveat that this really doesn't represent any of the community service being performed in the county. These are just the amount of monies that the county avoided. Now, you know, Lynn and I tried to really calculate how many hours we've got and how many people, it's a lot, okay? We've got a lot of community service out of these individuals and participants. Now, putting that into dollars and total numbers, his resources are better spent working with folks that are in the program than really getting those hours and numbers. If he ever wanted, I'm sure he'd be glad to, but when he and I were looking at this presentation, we decided it would take a long time to calculate that and we were going to put our resources into something else. Now, we'll move on to the Twin County Recovery Court. This is what a lot of you refer to as our drug court. This was something that other communities that were a lot larger than us had, but they had resources and money. However, we decided to pull our efforts with Grayson County, Grayson and Carroll County share felonies in the city of Galax. So we, when I say we, I'm talking about four people, Commonwealth Attorney Doug Vault, our Circuit Court Judge Brett Giesler, and Grayson Circuit Court Judge Lee Harrell. They all had other commitments tonight or they would have been here to talk to you too. Three and a half years ago roughly, all of us decided that we weren't going to let costs or anything else get in our way, that we were going to start a drug court pursuant to statute. The Drug Treatment Court Act is eighteen-two, two-fifty-four-point-one, and it is all the criteria that we have to go by. We knew obstacles in our way, we had no money, and we had really nothing other than we had to do something. We all realized that we have a drug problem and if we just sit around and continue to do what we're doing, we're not helping anything. So we started the Twin County Recovery Court. We still have very little money, but recently we got a grant from the state for about twenty-five thousand dollars. That will employ a part-time compliance officer for us. The Twin County Recovery Court accepts individuals who have drug issues, but they have to be high-risk and high-need. A lot of people say, well, why does it have to be high-risk and high-need? Simply because that's what the statute says. Every drug court that's approved is approved through the Supreme Court of Virginia. We got our charter, I think, May eighth, two thousand and eighteen. We had started gathering candidates before then, and that was when we formed, after many years of trying to get things together. We operated from May until December without any money. We literally borrowed the resources of the sheriff's office from Grayson and Carroll. And when I say resources, what I'm talking about is drug test kits, things like that. Each candidate in the Twin County Recovery Court is in day reporting by default. They do community service, they go to the classes, and they do a whole lot more. So your individual is high-risk and high-need, so when they come in, what do you do with them? Well, we'll talk about how they get there in a minute, but what do you do with them when they get there? They don't have unaccounted-for time. And what I mean by that, if they're not sleeping, we know where they're at and what they do. We have things that we put on their phone that mirror all their contact, all the stuff, and they all submit to this. We have multiple treatment teams through Mount Rogers that work with them and deal with substance abuse issues, if they have mental health issues, whatever their issues are, we don't leave them untreated. Whatever issues they're having, we don't leave them unchecked. We continue to make sure that we know where they're at, what they're doing, and that they're on the right path. We've had individuals come to us with no job, we help them with finding a job. There is a lot of extra effort that all the members of the Twin County Recovery Court put into it that we simply don't have to do. There's nobody on there that receives any extra compensation for it, so cost to any locality, anything like that is flat zero. But how do you get there? Well, the first thing is you make application, you make an application, we have a formal application that's submitted to the Commonwealth Attorney. If you have charges in Carroll or if you have them in Grayson, then we're the gatekeeper. We say yes or no. If we say yes, and you referred to Mount Rogers, Mount Rogers has a computer system provided by the state, and they assess the individual for high-risk and high-need. If they are not high-risk, high-need, then they can't be considered. If they are high-risk and high-need, they go in front of the full panel. Now, what's the full panel for the Twin County Recovery Court? That's myself, Commonwealth Attorney Doug Vault, both of our Circuit Court Judges, Officer Edmonds, his counterparts in Grayson, and probation and parole. They have one representative, Mount Rogers has two representatives, and we have another treatment provider through Mount Rogers, they have one representative. So all of us have to discuss the case and we have to decide, are they going to be somebody that we can, number one, supervise? And number two, are we going to put all of our effort into that individual? Because it does take a lot of effort. When they come to us, they are true addicts and it is very hard to work with them probably in the first sixty to ninety days. And what I mean by that is it is always something going on. There's always an issue. They may be testing positive, they may be falling back into other ways. So it does take a lot of commitment from us, so that's why everybody on the panel gets a win. We have not accepted some, but that's very few. Usually by the time they get to the full panel, they've been vetted several times and they are ready to go. Carol, right now, you can see, these are the candidates you have, A through I, so you have right now a total of nine candidates. And you can see their jail sentence is a lot more than you would have in a day reporting program. The day reporting does not have the supervision level that these folks have. These folks, until they get to the very end of the program, do not have idle time, and that is by design. Because if they have idle time, they're going to resort to old ways. Now, as they continue through the steps of the program, there are four steps, four phases, they get more and more free time and we monitor how they do with their free time. But you can see, if all of those folks complete, that's around two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars that the county would have avoided paying in jail fees. Because these folks are high-risk and, does everyone finish? No. We have removed two, I believe we're getting ready to remove another. So far, Carol has not had one removed, Grayson has had two. Airtime's coming, I mean, those things happen when you have a program. You're not going to have a hundred percent success rate, but it's not a lack of trying or putting effort into them. Now, when I talk to you about day reporting, I talk to you about, you know, if you violate, we don't ask for you to come back. In drug court, we know that there are going to be stumbling blocks, it takes a lot for you to get out of the program. We realize when you come to us, it's going to take a lot for the courts to do, you're going to fail a lot, and there are sanctions for that. You know, that sanction may be a weekend in jail, it may be a week in jail, maybe thirty days. There are a lot of different sanctions, community service, we've made people write essays, we've made them speak in front of the whole drug court about what they did and shame them in front of their peers. It just depends on that individual and what gets through to that individual as to what their violation reflects. But it does take a long time for them to get out of the program, because we want to make sure that we've tried everything that we can do if we've already taken a shot at drug courts with Kevin Perry. Eighteen months is the length of the program. It's a fairly lengthy program. Some people end up long, and that's because they don't graduate from stage one to stage two on the borderline. Most folks are going to do it a little bit longer. We are going to graduate our first candidates, if everything holds true. We have three candidates that are in stage four, they should finish up toward the end of the summer. One is a little bit ahead of the other two, but you would be surprised at the difference they are now than when they came. There are plenty of, this might be something to some of you folks, my grandfather used to say, what can give you a plug and nickel for that person? I've got a lot of those folks that I put in the program, what can give you a plug and nickel for? Now, when I see them, I can have intelligent conversations with them, they're motivated and they're ready, and we even have one individual who teaches NA to the others. He started his own program, we helped him with that, and he teaches some of our newer folks who are struggling, he reaches out to and does that. It's a worthwhile program, you know, we're not asking you for any money, I'm just presenting because you guys ask, what is it, how do you get there? And that's the rough nuts and bolts of it. Any questions about the program itself? How it works?
Thank you to your legal help in day-to-day operations. This is the way to go, I think.
Well, you can see, that's a lot of dollars not spent on incarceration. And, you know, for a lot of these folks, it will be continued incarceration if they do get out, if they didn't have a program to end on being. Most of these folks come to us when we begin, you would be surprised at the things we have to do with them. Half of these folks did not have a driver's license, and how are you going to get a job without a driver's license? So you have to work with them on where they owe costs to, do they owe costs to court? Why don't they have a license? Some of them we've tutored, and we have other volunteers in the program who've had to tutor them with the DMV book to get them, they could drive, and they had a license at one time, but they can't pass the test anymore. So it is a, there is a lot invested in these folks. This is only Carol's. Candidates, Grayson has about a similar number, they may have two short, I think we're right at seventeen, eighteen. We were at twenty, we had to remove a couple of folks. So that's the total, we don't really make a distinction about where you came from when you're in the program, whether you came from Carroll or Grayson, it's Twin County for a reason. I just broke this down so that you all could see exactly what Carroll was avoiding in the bill. But there's no less effort put in by me for referral from Grayson than there is from Carroll. We get them in and we work with them, whatever they need. Sometimes it's housing, license, job, you name it, we kind of have it.
May I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
The program's eighteen months long, but it far as a six-month or two-year or four-years?
That's one. And this is all by statute, this is not a creation of these two judges. Now, what happens when they graduate? It's a little bit different than day reporting where the individual goes back to probation. The real carrot, so to speak, for these folks, other than really changing their life, is what happens to their case? When they enter in, they just enter a plea. What happens to their case depends on them. So whenever they graduate from the program, they have to come back to court and the court decides what happens. Now, it can be dismissal, it can be reduced misdemeanors, it can be felony convictions. I have not been to a drug court in the twenty-second through the twenty-eighth, I think even the twenty-ninth, when I was going around to different localities. I have never seen a program completion where they got sentenced to jail. That's not the idea, but I have seen where someone had really serious charges, these are all serious, and I don't mean that to take away from any of them, but they had so many charges that the judge felt that they needed one felony conviction. He did convict that individual with one felony. Most of the time what you see is either dismissal or reduced misdemeanors, because when they graduate, they are a totally different person usually than what they became.
Do any of these folks you mentioned do ankle monitoring or is that something totally different?
different?
No. We do not have ankle monitoring. We don't have funding for it. And if... And I'll be honest, we have talked about that as we were... We had meetings, I don't know, it seemed like every month for years. If we had to put you in the program with an ankle monitor, you're probably not a candidate for us. If we have that level of distrust to start with, then we probably don't need you in the program. There has to be some level of trust, either through... Now, when a person makes an application, it's usually two months before they're ever accepted, because there's a lot of people that talk to them. When I get the application, if I say yes, then the next meeting I have is with defense attorney and with defendant by ourselves. And I have a conversation. I say, "Anything you tell me, I'll never use against you." And if I... Somebody has to prosecute you, it won't be me, but tell me why you think you're good for this. Usually it's at the point when I think they're going to be a candidate, we have a long talk about what's really expected of them and where we go from there. So, we have a lot of FaceTime interaction before they're actually into the program. But, you know, ankle monitor is something that we couldn't afford, and really, it's not for us. We do have their cellphone. The nice thing is, we have the MIRROR program. It's actually not called the MIRROR program. That's just what I call it. But every keystroke they do, every person they call, that is duplicated on the surveillance officer through Mount Rogers. So, she knows what you do, and she also knows, you know, you get those little screen time reports that tell me, you know, how often you use your phone. If she gets a report and says, you know, "Last week, you were down 40%," she knows, "I need to find out what you're doing, because you're lying somewhere, and I'm going to find what other cellphone you have." Or, you know, not in this locality, but in another locality. Giles, when I was over there, the offender was using his Xbox, his gaming console, and communicating with past drug users and drug associates. So, they took him, you know, that from him, and obviously gave him, I think, a week in jail to think about it. But he was trying to make contact with those folks to get back into the drug scene instead of using his cellphone. He was making it through other means. So, we can't stop them if they want to do that, but we do try to make it as hard as we can. And typically, it does not have to be a drug crime. That's the other misconception. Let's say the individual comes to us and they have larceny charges. If it is high risk, high need for drug use, and that's what's fueling their larcenies, you know, we talk to the victims. Hey, this candidate... And I've done this, you know, with Grayson County. We had a joint one. You've had your property stolen, and drugs are behind these crimes. Do you want to see them in drug court, or how do you want them punished? And you'd be surprised, number of people would say, "If they can get help with drugs, I'm okay with that." So, we do have a candidate who is not necessarily a true... They got caught with drugs, they got caught whatever. They don't have to be true drug crimes, but they have to be fueled or linked to drugs in some way. Statutory, no crimes of violence within the past 10 years. For the Twin County Recovery Court, generally, we don't consider any crimes of violence. There are exceptions. We have one individual who had a breaking and entering 22 years ago. That is a crime of violence defined by the code. We all voted that they probably need help, but they had drug crimes pending them. Yeah. All right. I'm going to yield the floor. Thank you for your time. Anytime that anyone wants to come to Drug Court, let me know. We'll be glad to have you. We meet every other Tuesday in Galax at the Public Safety Building, courtroom on the second floor. Thank you all.
Thank you. Committee appointments.
Mr. Chairman, it appears that these three people are well-qualified.
Are these... These the only candidates for the... We've got two library, correct?
Yeah.
And one IDA? We only have one IDA? Have we? You can speak for all of them, Bob.
Well, yes. Ms. Weaver, her husband recently passed away, but he worked in Washington for, what was I'm brain dead. But I know that family personally, and he... Mr. Weaver, the husband, I worked with him and his wife. I've done no reservations about that at all. And the, I think Ricky Thomas would be a...
I don't know.
I'd recommend him for the IDA. And the third one, I've lost.
Do we have two positions in the library? It shows Gerald not eligible. Just one. Ah.
Oh.
Y'all need another month to look at that?
Ms. Bowman, I don't know. The...
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Bowman is the...
Oh, okay.
Yes. She used to be the librarian.
Tough situation, and you've got two really good candidates.
Yeah, there are really good candidates. And I believe Ms. Weaver works in the tourism office, doesn't she? Yeah. So, I'm...
Oh, well, her husband worked there in Washington for Library of Congress, if it's Ms. Weaver, but I don't know.
Yep. Would y'all prefer to pass that on a month?
Well, I mean, you've got two good candidates.
It comes at 6:30, 2:19, so we've got a while before that Gerald's term expires.
Okay.
So, if y'all want to do that.
What about the IDA?
IDA? Do we have a motion for the IDA?
Yeah, I'd like to recommend Ricky Thomas. If any of you don't know him, he is the founder of TAM over on the Woodlawn Road. That was his business. He has since sold it. So, now he has got some extra free time to work with it. He knows how the IDA works. He used the IDA. Helped him when he started his business, and so he has an understanding of what IDA can do to help people here in the county, to help get stuff. When I talked to him about it, he was extremely... He said, "Yes," real quick. "I'd love to." So, I think he'll make a real good...
You made a motion, correct?
Yeah, I put his name in nomination.
I'll second the motion.
All right. I had Ricky in Sanlot football. So...
He's tough, because he was playing with a leather helmet.
That's right.
Right?
Yep. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Start with Joe.
Yes.
Yes. I say yes.
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
And yes.
Yes. All right. Y'all think about the others. We'll have those come up.
Are you appointing Ricky in chronological order of when the other positions expire?
Yes. That was only one of us open at this point in time.
And we have two more expiring this year?
Yep.
In May, I think.
Two in May.
One in June. Well, no, excuse me.
Two more positions in May and one in June.
Well, we need to do... How about District Three? Have you been reappointed? Steve?
I'm the alternate. I think Dr. Littler would actually be the one to use.
Okay. We need to redo the appointment? I don't... Just for Steve, for the alternate? Okay. I make a motion, we nominate Steve for that motion, I mean, for that District Three?
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Start with you, Joe.
On the District Three?
Yeah, sorry. You know, Steve.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
I say yes. Robbie?
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
And yes.
Bob? Okay.
Did you take a vote on the IDA?
Yes. You better.
Don't get me confused.
I'm confused.
I am too.
You know, yes.
All right, then the V... Okay, so the rest of them we do there.
I'm not sure there's any advantage to... I know we've got half time, but I like both of these candidates.
Well, I'd have to think about them. I didn't know that.
We got some down.
But I think we could... We don't have alternates on there, do we?
We can look and see when the next one is, when they got temporary appointment, because we do have two.
Yeah. Well, that'd be something to consider. We had Doug out here, he was on there at one point in time.
I had to resign since my wife was a part-time job there.
Conflict interest.
Yes.
I understand that. All right, that moves us down to citizens' time. No way signed up? No way wants to speak? Good gosh. That's unreal. All right, because supervisors' time. I'll start with you, Joe.
Okay. Just briefly, wow, we're in budget season right now, and it's tough times right now looking at budgets and trying to put numbers together and everything. But I appreciate the input of people that's talked to me about budget criteria and looking at places where we can. We heard our audit tonight that we're getting better. We're getting better. At least we're not going the other way. So, it's been tough. Tough decisions to make. As you all know, the guys at the board, I held an old-fashioned community meeting, March 5th, out at Law Fort. Just to report on that, I didn't take an actual count. I had between 35 and 40 people show up, which I thought was excellent for a first time. I think it was very well received. Got a lot of good input from citizens out there on issues facing the county. Had a lot of good questions about things they didn't understand and was able to help them. I just thought it was well received. I thought it was well communicated. Got lots of emails back thanking me for doing it later after the meeting. So, it's something I want to continue to do in my district to keep people informed, keep people informed and on exactly what's going on up here in this room with this board. And other than that, I need to ask for prayers and concerns. I'm dealing with prostate cancer, and I'm going to have a procedure done March 27th. It's outpatient procedure. Doctors say everything's great, you know how all that goes, but you never... It never hurts to have enough people thinking about you and praying for you. So, hopefully, all that will go down good and be done. And I continue to want to work for the people of Law Fort District, and I want to keep an open communications with those people especially, but I want to work for all the people in Carroll County. I think this board is looking at right now, and, you know, you heard the comment from our chairman when he asked the guy about debt policy. You know, it's something that we're looking at. It's something that I think is going to be a good tool for Carroll County going down the road. It's going to give us something to keep the departments and keep us in check. If we have a debt policy in place, whatever it ends up, wherever it ends up, it's always going to be there, and it can help us in making financial decisions for this county about going in debt and going in debt and going in debt. So, that being said, thank everybody for coming out tonight. I appreciate it. Appreciate the input that my citizens gave me, and I actually had citizens wasn't in my district came to that meeting. So, it was pretty neat. It was a pretty neat deal. And with that, I'll shut up.
All right, Philip?
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and all the work that you've done on the debt policy, and I hope we get that thing implemented, and it'll work, and hope we can make the right decisions in our budget plan, so there'll be the right things for the county and hold the taxes if we can. Thank you all.
All right, Bob?
Excuse me. Okay. Very soon, I think, the county will have announcements on... I hope I must be on the beans. Broadband, that we'll be able to start a preliminary program on some broadband towers. And down in God's country, Short's Creek, I had Appalachian Power, about 10 vehicles down there, because they're coming up through the edge of us, and they got right away and doing their... Steve, help me. Doing... They're putting in...
Are you talking about Appalachian Power?
No. I'm talking about Appalachian Power is installing high-speed internet.
They're putting fiber along their lines, and the primary reason for doing that is so they don't have to send people up to check it. The secondary benefit will be that people that live along where they're doing that might be able to access some decent internet.
And...
If they're willing to work with other risks and providers to... Unless you allow resources.
And I... Yeah. Sorry about that. I ramble around. But I had nothing to do... I'd like to claim it, but I had nothing to do with it. It was a business deal, but as Steve said, Appalachian Power in installing this is going to open up some high-speed internet possibilities for... And I think, as I remember, it comes out of With County. Is it good at Galax? I'm trying to remember. Put you on the spot.
I don't remember the exact reason, but I'll be happy to...
Well, but that, but the county is moving in the direction of some broadband services, and there'll be some announcements soon about that. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Littler?
Well, I thought we had a very informative meeting in so many different areas tonight. I see the room mostly full of citizens, and I think we have a budget challenge, but I think we're good for it, so we just look forward to moving along with it. Thank you.
All right, Robbie?
It's good to see everyone here tonight. It's always nice to see citizens get out and get involved. I'd like to thank Joe for the invite to his meeting the other night. It was a good informative meeting, and I enjoyed it. I thank Nathan and Glenn and JB for what they're helping with the Drug Court and the day reporting. It's a great service. It really is. And CSA is the CSA is the CSA. That's about all we can say about that. I've served on that board since I've been on this board and on the Social Services Board, and it's been a very eye-opening experience. Teresa faces a challenge. Her and Jackie face a real challenge each month with it. And I guess that's about it. Thank you all very much for being here.
Mr. Chairman, could I intervene? I left one thing out, and I just thought of. I had a call from a citizen in my district who has a cellphone tower very, very close to their house. And in the communications, talking to them during these ice storms, and we've had unusual ice storms, but couldn't even go out in their backyard for the ice falling off of it. She was really concerned about who even owned it. She didn't know. So, I followed up on it, and I got ahold of the company that put the tower in, and he was very, very nice and everything, but when I... and he was very, very nice and everything, but when I came up and talked to our building official and our land use, Carroll County doesn't have any restrictions on one of those towers. I just wonder if that's not an issue that we should look into in the future? So that, the guy that, that put the tower in, he said, well, those things gotta be in a very, very certain spot to work, but I don't think we should be putting our citizens in danger or it be a nuisance to some of our citizens. And I just wonder how the board felt about looking into some kind of a resolution or rule that, that protects our citizens from these towers, because I know there's going to be more and more. And I don't want to stop any communication or, or whatever we do. I don't want to be a hindrance in that, but I also don't want to see something bad happen and we didn't have anything in place that tried to limit the variance of where it should be from person, you know, residents. I just, just throwing that out there.
Ronald, was that not tossed around at one time about setting some limitations on those towers?
In nineteen ninety-nine.
That's what I thought. It's been a long time ago.
Yeah.
This, this one's probably within sixty feet of the house?
She's, I didn't actually, she said fifty feet. The guy from the tower company said, no, 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 it's not that close. I didn't physically go out there and measure it, but he did say, you know, if it's a windy day when the ice is melting, it could blow chunks of ice that close. So he said there wasn't a whole lot that he could do about it, but, and he was sorry that, that they weren't being a good neighbor, but I think we need to take a look at having a variance, you know, whatever you call it.
Setbacks.
Setback, yeah, setback ordinance on these things so that they don't continue to put them in and endanger people as those things could be.
Steve, would you take a look at that and get back to us next month?
You're kind of limited in your options, but I can lay, lay out where your options are.
Yeah, yeah, would you take a look at it and see if there's something that we could do as a board, as a county? Thank you, sorry.
Could you finish that?
Mr. Chairman, the other thing you might want to consider, that, that a lot of localities have tower ordinances that require that if there's a legitimate public use for that kind of structure, that basically you'll have access to, if they're called tower ordinances.
Okay. Yeah, I think so, I think so. I think so. Think that'd be a good thing to do. I've got, I've got a couple of things. You know, we've been having issues. We, we, we have revenue issue and then we have expenditure issues. Everybody has that, but ours has been particularly tough the last several years. And delinquent taxes is another one. And I was just made aware that there's a couple of different things that we can do. We can do offset collections. That means we can seize people's tax returns from the state where they're not paying their taxes. And also we get warrants and debts for those folks. So that's something we're probably going to be looking at, working with the clerk of the court, excuse me, treasurer's office to see what we need to work on all three aspects. You know, delinquent taxes is a big deal and Steve, you just briefly, you just give us a couple of things, what you've been doing with that already.
I mean, have a few, Mr. Chairman, just to update you on the progress of our efforts to collect delinquent real estate taxes. To date, well, as of March eighth, we have collected three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. I think that's about thirty-one thousand dollar increase from last month. Two thousand and forty dollars in total administrative fees collected. The total number of properties that we were, that were submitted to us for collection were two hundred and seventy-five properties in total. We have payment plans on fifty-three of those properties. Seventy-one properties have paid in full as of today's date, so we're, we're making some progress there. Next steps in the process, we're continuing to file suits with the court and we're continuing to collect on contracts where we have payment agreements in place. We have tentative dates that we're considering for our first tax sale. We're looking at May thirty-first or June first for the, the first land auction of delinquent properties and we'll be seeking decrees of sale from the circuit court and I anticipate we'll probably have a list of all those decrees of sale probably sometime in April that we can publicize not only to notify the delinquent taxpayers of the impending sale, but also to notify the public of the, of the opportunity to, to purchase at the auction. We will be continuing to file suit. We've, we've we've established our, our first batch. We're taking this in batches so as not to flood the, the real estate market with a bunch of delinquent properties at once. So this will be our first tax sale, but this will be a continuing process. We'll, I expect we'll have another sale later in the summer and the fall as well. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I have, I have a lot of citizens in the county ask about it and just because it's been quiet doesn't mean there's been no activity, as your report surely indicated.
There's been a lot of work in the background, doing the title work and finding lien holders and getting those suits ready to file. We're proceeding with suit now.
All right, I plan on making a motion or a resolution. It's a reference to hiring and pay freeze for all non-law enforcement and non-constitutional positions. In light of the financial constraints generated by the county's current revenue constraints, it is imperative that Carroll County control and reduce costs, particularly in the general fund. Carroll citizens have had to contend with significant debt service and the next large, single largest expenditure in our government is personnel cost. In order to ensure that most all employees retain their positions, cuts must be made in light of tight fiscal constraints. This hiring and pay freeze intends to minimize employee disruptions, layoffs and ease financial conditions. The hiring and pay freezes shall include both full and part-time positions. Whereas the Carroll County Board of Supervisors has determined that a hire freeze, hiring freeze and pay freeze is necessary in a time of severe budgetary constraints. Carroll County Board of Supervisors hereby establishes an indefinite personnel hiring freeze for Carroll County. Indefinitely suspend all pay policies for Carroll County and eliminates the three percent proposed cost of living pay increase. Additionally, the Carroll County Board of Supervisors will conduct job task analysis and organizational restructure analysis and audit to determine if and any cost savings through position elimination, reassignment or organizational restructuring may benefit the county's fiscal position. This just pertains to non-law enforcement and non-constitutional, it does not, let me run that value. It's a hiring and pay freeze for non-law enforcement and non-constitutional positions. I make this motion to pass this resolution.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
As far as I'm concerned, the employees are the most important part of the whole county and I think this is a little ahead of the game because we don't have the school board, school board budget and some other things. I'm not saying I'm against it, but I'm not sure this is the time to do it.
Well, we've, we've had, I think we've had several positions put in for additional funding in this budget year. That's what costs you, cost of funds. This has been occurred over the past and, you know, that's my thoughts on it. Phillip? Oh, you, we got a second. Yeah, but there's any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is this resolution also pertaining to locally funded positions that are in the constitutional offices?
It pertains to what we pay for.
So there is a local, there are local treasury offices that pay for those people as well.
Yep, well, no, it doesn't pertain to all, does not pertain to constitutional offices.
No, the, the employees that are funded by county general funds is what I'm asking about, not the constitutional.
In those offices.
It would not have an effect on those people in the offices if they got state-funded pay increase.
They don't. There's a couple. I think what you're, I mean, try to explain a little bit. A couple, a couple of the positions in, like, the treasurer's office is fully funded by the county. Does it want to affect those positions?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just for clarity's sake, I, I think it might be appropriate to withdraw your motion and, and remove it with that clarification.
All right, I'll make, I redo that motion.
Do you withdraw your second?
I will, I'll withdraw my second, yes.
All right, so I redo my motion with what our attorney said.
With the clarification?
The clarification.
If it is a position that is funded in, within a constitutional office, but funded by the local funds?
Yes.
It is subject to some.
Yes. All right.
And then it, that motion would be in either second.
All right, do I have a second on that change in?
So moved, so moved.
Any other discussion?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Martin.
Excuse me, I'm.
No, you go ahead.
All right, how does this, oh, we haven't, we haven't gotten a school budget and when do we receive the, it coming out? Any mandate or don't, all right. How, how, all right, how's the motion affect school races? I mean, for employees, I.
They're getting a five percent.
No, they don't. This doesn't affect them. That's, theirs are paid. We have a possible two percent that we may have to pay for the school, their employees.
Yeah, okay. It. I'm, I'm in agreement that so far it, it, it looks like we're going to be in a real bad situation with expenses versus revenues. Unless unpaid taxes, that we have a windfall there, okay? I would really like to see what the school board is asking for.
As soon as we get that number, we'll be sure to send it out. I'm anticipating probably tomorrow that we'll get the votes.
I mean, I'm, frankly, I can, I can, I'm not opposed to this at all. Now, I'd like, we got a key part of our budget that.
Well, this, this helps the budget process. If we vote this, that takes out several, several items there. We'll still have to address other items like the CIP. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to explain my viewpoint on this. What was proposed to us at our last budget hearing, the proposed budget that we're facing was a huge increase of what we spent in this budget. And somebody did the math there at the meeting and said, well, we can cover this proposed budget with putting eight more cents on the real estate. And nobody's sitting here is in favor of doing that. And I know you people are not.
And that's before we got the school budget?
That, and still don't have the schools' budget, yeah. So I'm, I was in agreeance to this, as this is a starting point, that we can start looking at each category that we're funding with taxpayers' money and you know, this, this is not going to be something that's forever. I hope we can get turned around and get back our head above water a little bit. I mean, you know, you heard we're a hundred and four, a hundred and four million dollars in debt with annual budget of forty-two million. We're a hundred and four million in debt. And we've got to do something. We, this county has got to do something. We cannot keep making the budget bigger and bigger and bigger every year. It's just, it's, it's not ethical. It's not reasonable. I mean, we can, but next thing you know, we're going to be paying a dollar a hundred on real estate to try to cover what we keep adding on year after year after year. So I think this is a great idea. It's a great starting point. It's going to give us more information about looking at each individual department that we're funding, that uses county funds and make sure that money is being spent wisely. Is it necessary to have that many employees in your department? You know, it, you know, with this analysis, you know, talking about the, we'll conduct job task and organizational analysis. We don't know what they're doing with it. Their budget says, and they say, we want to see it. We want to see that you need this county money. We want these departments to prove to us that these budgets that they're throwing out here in front of us is necessary or can we back up a little bit till we get our eyes out of the water? That's, that's just my opinion on it. Thank you.
I, I would like to see departments presented at least quarterly to us. Department heads come and present quarterly to us and explain to us what they're doing, where they're at. The bleeding's got to stop somewhere and that's just where I'm at with it too.
I was totally shocked with the budget that was presented. And that's kind of what I, I did not sleep that night. Stayed up looking and researching, doing everything. I possibly could think about this county. We, we got to a point that we may, we were breaking even this last year, as you heard the auditor. But before then, the chart that I showed, which I'll share with you, press, is our expenditures were up here and our revenue was down here since two thousand thirteen till last year. You know, these, this, this, as they said, the bleeding's got to stop. This is the first step. And that's all I got to say about that. And call for the question. Start with you, Joe?
Yes.
Phillip? I say yes. Robbie?
Yes.
Doctor Littrell?
I'm not opposed to the concept, but I think the timing is wrong. I'll say no.
Okay. Bob?
I'm not opposed to it. I agree with Doctor Littrell. I'd like to see, I'd like to see the, we got another part to the equation, which I don't think is going to be very good, but I've been.
Okay.
I'd like to see the school part. What is it, fifty percent of our expenses?
Well, the motion carries, but we can, there, it doesn't mean that this can't be changed down the road.
Okay, well, yeah.
This is, I look at it more as an analysis.
Changes my vote because I, I, you know, it's worried me too because I've just tried to figure out how in the world that we can get by on some of this stuff, but, but when you got over a million dollars between the social services, child protective services and then regional jail and we have no say-so over it. I mean, we're in hot water just in that area, I, you know.
It's tough.
I know, and I, I'm willing to make tough decisions, but I'd like to see that, that school part of it.
Well, we, we will.
Yeah, I know, right.
And, and I will give you something. What did I do with it? I ran the numbers the other day on what, it's on their calculations, called the school calculation. I'll get it, I'll get that to you, that you can look at. If it's, if I know exactly, usually you can go online, you can pull their numbers up and the, the number of the ADM is already in there. So you can look and see what the state's going to give us and what our requirement is. At this point in time, our, our requirement last year was seven million dollars. What did we pay last year for school? Eleven million in addition to four million dollars in debt. So those are things that we, we have to look at coming down the road.
Yeah.
And they've been good to us the last couple of years and not asked for any increases in. And they've been good to us the last couple of years and not asked for any increases in our stuff. But I anticipate it coming.
You're absolutely right and I thank you for zeroing in on the numbers. And in the back of my mind, it may very well be we have to look at the funding for the schools, okay?
I agree.
You got to put everything on the table, but I still like to see their numbers.
Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second?
A second.
Alright, adjourn.
Would you unplug this circuit? Time flies when you have fun.
Oh, it does, and...